Thank you.
All the Grand Forks County Commission meeting to order, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. The, have all the commissioners are present today. And so we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Second, anybody? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Most say, say. Alright, minutes are approved. Approval of the Order of Agenda. Any additions or corrections to the Order of Agenda? Do I have a motion to approve? Second, anybody?
One second, motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion is carried. Approval of the Consent Agenda. Does anybody wish to have anything called from the file to review? If not, I would like a motion to approve. Okay, Commissioner, approves the consent, approval of consent agenda. Second, anybody?
One second.
Second, by Commissioner Peach. By saying aye. Same sign. Equalization Director.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I have a couple things for you today. The first is for your information, it is a copy of my letter to the county assessors concerning the recommended average value per acre for twenty twenty-three. As required by North Dakota Century Code fifty-seven dash two dash twenty-seven point two. Will be on the next page if anybody has any questions on that. Also attached is the notice of county average value creator for twenty twenty-three provided by the state tax commissioner. Any questions on that? And the estimated average per acre for the county as a whole on cropland and non-cropland combined for twenty twenty-three is one thousand sixty-four dollars and sixty-six cents as compared with nine hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy cents for twenty twenty-two. Therefore, I am recommending a four percent increase in agricultural answer twenty twenty-three, which keeps us within the state recommended tolerance of ninety-one percent. So I am doing the lowest increase I can to keep us in compliance. The soils committee did meet today. And they did make a motion to approve my recommendation on a vote of three to one. Mr. Rust is there today. My soils committee commissioner, thank you.
You're an expert, Throms.
Yes, yes, we really appreciate that. Anyway, this is just for your information, we don't vote until June on the county board force land values, but is, do you have any questions? If you didn't, where to find me or how to get ahold of me. The next item I do need a motion by you, and this is to write off the mobile home taxes that are not paid. We did this last year, and I think we've done this one other time. So when this happens, our office works with the sheriff's department to collect these taxes. There are times that the sheriff's department cannot collect the taxes because the owners are not able to be located or the mobile home has been taken off the lot. After the sheriff's department has exhausted all attempts to locate the mobile homes, it is unnecessary to cancel these uncollectible mobile home taxes. Sheriff Schneider and his staff work really hard to try to collect these, and when they can't, we have to write them off. So according to North Dakota Century Code fifty-seven dash twenty-two dash eleven, cancellation of uncollectible taxes at a regular meeting in January each year, the Board of County Commissioners shall examine sheriff's report on personal property taxes and compare the same with the tax list of the auditor and treasurer. And upon such report may cancel such taxes as the board is satisfied cannot be collected.
So move. Motion by Mr. Rust. Second, by anybody?
One second now, motion.
Commissioner Peach. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Kate Goldaddy, I'm a nurse at Grand Forks Public Health Department, I oversee the family health team, which includes the school nurses that we have and up here today to provide an update to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to get that update on our school county nurse activities from Grand Forks Public Health. So as a review of the position, as a continued support and funding from the county commission, we have the two full-time nurses that support and serve for rural public school districts of Laramore and now Midway and Amariado. And most key duties would include onsite nursing services on the average of two days at each of those schools, providing rapid assessments to the students and assessing and helping staff as needed, providing curriculum on health and wellness, resources for immunization and information, and also providing information for community guidelines for COVID nineteen, as well as other circulating infectious illnesses as the school year is progressing. And today I'm here to focus on this timeframe from October to December to provide that quarterly update to you on some specific activities. So in addition to the key duties mentioned previously, some specific highlights of those activities since our last update in October include rolling into fall with some excitement, of course, educating the students and helping the staff with activities including nineteen presentations to the students with topics such as puberty, personal hygiene, fentanyl actually, and e-cigarettes and vaping with, and it must contribute some assistance from the Grand Forks Public Health Tobacco Team that they helped to vet some resources and making sure that it sounded current information. They completed ninety-eight assessments, rapid assessments, or well-being interactions with the students and staff, assisted with pre-kindergarten health screenings, so twenty-six students in total. Helped to coordinate for onsite influenza vaccinations and COVID booster clinics to all assigned schools and help put immunization record reviews as needed. They also collaborated in one school in particular, collaborated the school and mobile ambulance services to in-state and our county onsite for emergency use. And education for staff is slated into the third quarter here as school rolls on, and their employees then ready to assist other schools as needed and requested. They collaborated with school staff also to update information, school information to be easily accessible on the school websites, really focusing on frequently asked topics, headlights, et cetera. And also ensuring access to home test call for COVID, or available for students and staff as requested and needed, and also completed mental health for state youth training course that was additional time spent for personal professional development opportunities online. So looking ahead into the fourth, the third quarter of school, are we going to, of course, continue that onsite support, what began the average of two days at each school? And also with continued curriculum for the classrooms with more focus on to winter safety, baking and e-cigarettes and kind of continuing with other classrooms to reach more expanded ages. And then just to continue with the strategies to support both the physical and mental health and behavioral health within their school practice to ensure that resources and information is accessible to all the students and it's a healthy environment to learn. We really had the administrators and school staff continue to express their appreciation as to our week or the ability to be having our school nurses support that position. And we're happy to provide the service of public health, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you for your.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, thank you for having me here this afternoon. My name is Haley Brown, and I'm the Nursing and Nutrition Manager at Grand Forks Public Health. Today I'm going to take an opportunity to talk with you a little bit about the results and process of the twenty twenty-two community health assessment. The community health assessment is really a partnership between Grand Forks Public Health and Altru Health Systems. My co-presenter is typically Audrey Lorenz from Altru, and she was unable to be with us this afternoon. So I'm going to go through a little bit about what the process entails and then talk with you about our fine things. So as an advisory committee, one of our first things is to establish some partnerships within our community. The community health assessment process is really a collaborative of many different community agencies, including law enforcement, schools, regional healthcare providers, and many others to come together. So one of the first things that we do is we adopt the process that we're going to use. This is a year-long process, it starts early of twenty twenty-two, and we spent all of twenty twenty-two working on it. So up ahead on the slides are the process steps. For our data collection, you can go to the next slide, please. Our data collection is really a robust effort, and so because of this, we engaged a team of students from the University of Masters Public Health Program. This year's team was Minosh Krfashi, Nicole Benson, and Sarah Larson, with support from Ashley Bain and Andrew Williams. This team did an excellent job of compiling all of the data that was approved for our report, and you can go to the next slide. So when we talk about secondary data review, this is data that already existed within the community. And our advisory team helps compile that list for the students, so this is any data that we currently use in our practice. It's a really robust list that we have, and you can see here that sources include like the North Dakota and Minnesota Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System. We use US Census data, kids count, information from the North Dakota and Minnesota Department of Health. You can also see here that county health rankings is specifically mentioned. County health rankings is a partnership between the Robert Johnson Foundation and the University of Wisconsin Population Health. This is really important data because it allows us to have a year-to-year comparison of how we're doing. And so you can see on here, some of the positive changes for both Grand Forks and whole county include our quality of life, health factors, health behaviors, clinical care, physical environment, mental health providers, and excessive alcohol drinking. So those are some positive changes, so it's always nice to see that some of the previous year's priorities are maybe trending in a little bit better direction. And you can see some of the negative changes on that report include poor mental health days, alcohol, and care-driving deaths, unemployment, and increase in overdose and fatalities. So on the next slide here, we have our community survey, so this year we had almost four hundred respondents to our community survey. Overall respondents felt like there are good opportunities and good overall health. However, you can see that there are areas where necessary improvements are needed to be made. One thing I think it's important to note is that the majority of our respondents on the survey self-identified as being female, white, holding a bachelor's degree, and having an annual income of more than seventy-five thousand dollars annually. At the same time, however, our census data tended to trend in a different direction, and so I think this is an opportunity for future assessments where we can maybe get a better, more diverse snapshot of our community. But it also highlights the importance of why we do focus groups. So we did two types of focus groups, the first being a community focus group. And we did four different community health focus groups, and those were the NFI population, so that being new Americans, foreign-born, and immigrants. We did one with indigenous populations, the LGBTQ population and adults with disabilities. We also did a focus group on community leaders, so members of the advisory committee helped come up with a list of fifty different community leaders. We could have had a little bit better response rate from that, I think we got about thirteen different community leaders to participate. But it's important that we meet with these groups because we really want to engage people who are accessing services who might not be as inclined to fill out a survey. And so it's good for us to hear from them as well. And you can see on the list there, some of the things that they pointed out were similar to what was resulted in the community survey, but also, they also had some resources too. So our priority setting process, and we can go to the next slide, please, is a two-part process with the advisory committee. And these are the things that we really consider as we're determining what is going to be the priorities. The overall connection to the assessment is to improve the overall health of the community by focusing on factors that promote health and wellness. So we really take a look at that as we're setting our priorities. Next slide, please. So the six priorities that were on this year's twenty twenty-two community health assessment. And if you're familiar with any of our previous health assessments, you will see that some are the same, but some are very new this year and new for a community health assessment in Grand Forks, specifically being workforce and childcare. But this is much in line with community health assessments that we're seeing throughout the region. As many of our other regional partners are conducting their own community health assessments, we are seeing a lot of these types of things pop up. We need to have a healthy community in terms of a healthy workforce that can go to work, and that's part of the health of our community. So the other ones were mental health, improving the mental well-being of all of our residents, substance use, and that includes alcohol, drug, tobacco, and other drugs. Obesity is one, and then access to care, and that includes primary specialty behavior and oral healthcare with a focus on reducing barriers. So this was an informational item for you today. It has been approved by the Altru Board of Directors, that was our first presentation stop in December. We also presented to our Board of Health and got their approval in January, and later this evening I'll be presenting this to city council as well. And aside from that, the next working step is really to start our community health improvement plan, which we tend to call the CHIP. And so that will begin with that plan set by May fifteenth. So it's very exciting things happening for us, do you have any questions for me?
There was, I saw that we had gone down a step out of forty-four counties over from twenty-one to twenty-two. And Polk County went from seventy-one all the way up to forty-four. What, is there any like explanation of the big jump for Polk County, like what they're doing that you know?
So I think, so I don't have a specific answer to that, but just to kind of help understand how county health rankings works. County health rankings we like because it includes a variety of factors, so it includes things like environmental air quality, obesity, it includes a number of adults who report poor mental health days. So it's really a comprehensive measurement, it's not just one specific factor. I do have Debbie Swanson here also, and I would like to thank Debbie for her work on the community health assessment because together with Audrey, she really drives this. Debbie, do you have an answer about the difference in Polk County's rankings and ours?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and Commissioner Hagan. It's my understanding that some of the improvements in Polk County have been as a result of what they call their state health improvement plan. And they do those regionally with multiple colonies, and they do a lot of planning. And they've been doing quite a bit of work around prevention, so I think some of it is related to that, I don't know exact factors, but I would be happy to dive into that a little bit, because that question came up at our Board of Health meeting as well. And so I'll go back to both groups with a little bit of analysis on why Polk County improved so much and Grand Forks County dropped. I do know that some of our county health rankings have been decreasing in the areas of substance use, specifically alcohol and a few environmental factors, but we always score really high in clinical care. That's solidly, we're in the top five in clinical care always. And so I think that just shows the need for more prevention.
Any other questions?
You will now attend.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ross and members of the commission. Today I present you with the one and only contract bid that we received for the construction of the current tenant care site in order to meet state compliance requirements that so you can become a certified shelter care facility. Once certified, we can receive daily compensation from the state for shelter care youth that we house. Just for a refresher, this construction is going to be putting in egress windows and bedrooms for those shelter care youth. You should all have received a copy of the bid from Craft Masters Construction with an estimated total of forty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. This construction will be paid by the county, but it will be reimbursed by the state through the grant that we were approved for. I'm hoping to get this approved today so that we can move forward and get shelter care as possible.
Questions? Yes.
Robin, what did you get for the, the grant that you received? It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that covers some of the employee salaries, the construction, and any other prices, any other. We didn't have like an exact alignment of where the costs were going to go because we don't really know yet, but it's a hundred and fifty thousand total.
When, if we were to approve this today, what kind of a timeline is this construction company able to achieve these project? These eight different things they've listed.
I'm hoping in a month. I, I mean, they know it needs to be as soon as possible because we have to use our entire grant money before the end of June, so we have to be up and running. That's why this needs to be kind of pushed along.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Hagan. Second? Second by Commissioner Ruston. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion is carried. Highway engineer.
Chairman, who's the board? Okay, for consideration today. Back a couple months ago, I got permission to see for some box culverts. He did that, and this was material only at this time. Scheduling issues with manufacturing, you want to try to get out as soon as you can with the intent of big installation later. The bids came in way higher than I thought they were going to come in. Just for, for example, I had one example here of a box culvert within Wally Township. And twenty twenty, the material price was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, now it's three hundred and sixty-six, that's over two and a half times increase. Yeah, it's just, I was floored by, I knew the timelines were, you know, they're almost a year out, but nine months out, but pricing is getting crazy. My thought is, my proposal to the board would be is to accept these bids for now. And I'm going to look at some alternative options for these locations. For instance, instead of putting in a double box culvert, putting in five pipes or options like that, or look at some other, other, like a metal box culvert. Concrete box culverts are the best option we have available to us right now, but clearly everybody else knows that too, and so manufacturers are really backed up, and they're popular, so. And we're potentially maybe postponing a job or two till next year. But some of these structures are in great poor shape and posted low talent, so. We would have the money if we choose to go forward with them, we could cover it. That's a big gap for my, my plan as far as what we do from here, it'll chew up a lot of our construction budget. So, yeah, I would propose we for now, save our spot in the queue for manufacturing. I did talk to the little bit manufacturer, I brought this idea up to him, it's like, if we got vacuum in a month or two, could we pull out with, you know, pull one or two or three of these locations with no consequence? And they said, sure, yes, they're still backed up with workers, like, yeah, that's fine, and Grand Forks County is a long-time client, they want to do good, so. That would be my request, and then once, if we do change something, I'd come back and then the installation, once we change material types or change projects. Any questions?
Have a motion by anybody? Commissioner Peach?
I would move that the highway department would request temporary approval of the old castle bid to reserve a spot in the manufacturing queue. In the meantime, the highway department would look for alternative options and report back to the board at a later date.
Second by Commissioner Hagan, just a quick question. Yep, so when you say that you wouldn't have to, this money isn't permitted to the contractor until we enter into a contract for the work they're going to actually, or the materials they're going to provide, right?
In, in this case, we, we bid the material price separate from the installation.
Right.
So the contractor know the, the materials are not tied to the contractor at all.
The materials is what we're approving, but you don't have to spend it all because you might not do all the projects, or what?
Oh, correct, yes, what, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to work on alternative plants, alternative material types or configurations of the culverts, and see if I can get some of those to work out, get some quotes on those, and then come back and see if there's some better options for us.
And you're sure we're not locked into any of these choices, and you'll be able to change as we go forward?
Correct.
Good. Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion is carried.
Thank you. On a positive note, there's some bills at the state legislature that if they're passed, that would definitely help make up for this, there's some nice bills, actually I'm going to this park tonight to testify at some tomorrow, or one tomorrow, but but help, so the state legislature certainly doing what they can to help us out with what they got, so. That was very nice to see. Second item is, we did conduct an auction last week on the hazard mitigation grant house that we received, and I have no option here, but I must be doing something right. We got thirty thousand six hundred dollars for it, and it was quite interesting to see there was three parties bidding on it, and two of them just went back and forth quite a bit, so that was good for the county, you know? I, I did write up a contract and as long as we reviewed it and we made some revisions to it, and lays out the basics, because there was no plans or specs for this, so the only thing that was advertised was the legal app that had some of the basic requirements on it, and then being that the contractors, I guess we'll call them contractors that were bidding on it, and not seeing the contract, we didn't get it negotiated, and as long as it, I told the morning of the auction, this was something new, we've never done this before, I didn't have a template to go off of. I offered to them, I said, well, you know, give me a check for what you bid, take the contract, and before we did the auction, I read through the bulk of it before they bid and asked you any questions. I said, well, if you could take the contract and review it, if there's an issue, come back and we'll just have to deal with it, but they did on it was Friday. Anyway, I have their signed contract that they, to the terms and conditions. Yeah, January twelfth, they gave it that. So he didn't make the packet, that's why it wasn't in the packet, it was just a little too late. But I would ask for acceptance of that, of the bid, and please know that ninety-three percent of this was back to feeback because they're paying ninety-three percent of the project, so we have to keep a couple thousand dollars. But instead of a couple thousand dollars, you know, we, you don't have the expense of removing the house, and we get to save a really nice house for somebody cute. I would ask for something to the contract and auditors and chairman's signature on the contract.
So Mr. Rust, did they stay out, they're going to get it out of there?
A little bit, yeah, so this morning, I ran water grater, followed path through field, about half a mile. And then they have to get excavated out there and knock the levee that's around the, around the property, knock that down, take a couple trees down, and then, yeah, drive through the path to get it out, so it's, it's a complicated It's, it's a complicated move, there's a lot of levels to it, so assuring of the things, but.
I'm glad that that building is going to be used as somebody else's.
And I'm glad we don't have to build a bridge.
To one else.
Okay, do I have a motion? Commissioner Ruston, okay, second. Second by Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Yes.
I'm sure I'll say you have a question for Mr. West. Um, as I'm traveling from one end of the county to the other, I noticed on Highway Two where they put additional lights at intersections. Um, Laramore's are good, but McCann has one on the McCann turn, it doesn't work anymore. So who do I contact to tell them it's not working? Because with this wind and fog, I need lights.
At the McCann turn?
At the McCann turn, yeah, on the Highway Two, there is a, a light, a, a big light, and.
It would be the state.
Yeah, so who do I contact at the same? Please let them know that, that one is out. But they are very nice that they put them in at most, most of the major turns on Highway Two. And they're really a nice, okay, it's coming, that's that headlight, but that one has not been working for the past three weeks, and we really need it with all this fog. Okay, yes.
Yeah.
I didn't realize there was one there.
They're great, it's wonderful, yeah, but that one's not working. Thank you.
Yep, and I do have to check.
Freddie Carlson, are you here?
Right.
Be great along finances.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have initial resolution for the limited tax capital project bond, uh, bonds for the dome and the. Marksmen, it's up to ten million dollars. It will be advertised at this, this, just the sixty day initial period that we have to advertise that we're going to do it. And we'll come back the first meeting in April, so I need a motion to approve this initial resolution.
And that's, that's, that period, that sixty days is public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions from anybody?
I do have one, I, I mentioned this to Bob earlier. You have to know, so let's just paint a scenario where we make a deal with the city and turn over the route. And let's just say it drags out beyond sixty days, is there a penalty for early payment on that bond?
So we haven't issued the bonds yet, so we don't know if there will be a call date on the bond.
It will be issued for what, sixty days?
Well, six days, we'll come back here after we've waited, then it will be, you know, sometime later that the bonds will be issued.
Yeah.
What is normal, I mean, this is, that is normal, I believe.
For a call date?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Close the end of the term. Or there wouldn't be a, a call date at the beginning.
So the concern was on the dome that, uh, we needed to get rolling on it and, uh, looking at some other. Issues to take care of it, but we gotta wait, we have to wait to sixty days, so. And then according to the. Our advisor on that dome, that, uh, it's going to be June, June anyway. With the bidding process and all that stuff that goes on, so we have time.
And you can all do less than ten million?
Yeah.
Or none at all. Sixty days.
Thank you very much. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the bonds? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Peach, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried.
Mr. Chairman, I have four more. Twenty twenty-two budget amendments, if you recall, the second meeting in December, I had a list of budget amendments, these are. Additional bills that we had to pay before the end of the year, so after you had made the approval, I still need four more amendments approved.
Any questions on those other budget amendments?
One said, can we do them in one, all in one motion? Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve those budget amendments?
I would move approval, Mr. Chair.
Make some motion, second. Second by Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. Director of Administration.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I do have a report for the board tonight.
Okay. State's Bernie.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I just have an update on the opioid settlement. If you recall from previously, Grand Forks County was a party to the opioid litigation that took place nationally. There have been a number of settlements reached with the, with different distributors and manufacturers of opioids. As you're aware, Grand Forks County has received some funds, it's very small amounts. I believe Ms. Nelson said we recently received some additional funds. But what I wanted to update you on today is, uh, the bulk of the funds went to the state of North Dakota. The state is anticipating receiving up to sixty-two million over the next four to eighteen years in opioid settlement funds. These funds are to be placed into a opioid remediation program. And just last week, the governor issued a executive order. Putting together a committee to decide how those funds will be distributed. Uh, I'm not sure at this time if it'll be like a grant process or something of the like, but. Pointed on this committee is reimbursed from the Association of Counties, so he will have a voice at the table. To determine how those funds will be spent or, or the process for, for granting them out to localities, if that's the choice of the committee. So, uh, I just wanted to update you on, on that. And I'll continue to do so as I know more.
Questions? Okay. All right, any reports? Start with, uh, Mr. Commissioner Ruston.
Seven one, she spoke earlier today of the soil. She mentioned that they recommended a four percent increase in valuation. Meaning it was actually held was twenty nineteen. That was three percent, it kind of flowed around pretty low. There's only been a few hiccups over the course of, well, the last couple of decades where they had some hot dinners, twenty twelve. It was like a twenty-five percent, this one, uh, is four percent. I believe the, uh, committee as well as the farmer in attendance thought it was reasonable. Now, I don't think there's going to be a lot of drama surrounding it.
Commissioner Hagan.
I have nothing new to report, nothing going on until the rest of the week, so next time we'll have more.
Thank you, Commissioner Peach.
Um, to this afternoon, prior to this meeting, the Human Services Zone met. We just went over, uh, various, uh, numbers of people being served in our state or in our county, excuse me. We had, uh, seven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine cases being served in economic assistance, about eleven thousand three hundred. Individuals. Their employment is holding steady. There, we have some openings in the social services side, although they were happy to report on the economic assistance side. That, uh, they had full employment, so that is very good. They did talk about the CPS, the Child Protection Services, there are one hundred and eighty-two open assessments taking place right now. Mr. Antoine has, uh, asked the state for two additional staff for the county. So that we can address those because that's quite a process, um, in hiring individuals. Uh, the one thing that they don't know about the hundred and eighty-two cases is, are they going to be closed? Are the children going to end up going with their families, or are they going to need foster care? And that becomes a concern, we have, um. What hundred, let me see, I wrote this down somewhere, a hundred and fifty-two that are placed in Grand Forks County. Of children that are in foster care, fifty-three are in kinship care in their families in the county. And so kinship care, when they're caring for their relatives, children, they don't get a reimbursement for that, like they do say in foster care. Forty-three are outside of the state of North Dakota, um, in kinship care, and then. There are fourteen placed, um, forty-three are outside of North Dakota. Were placed outside, I wrote that wrong, so I apologize, but, uh, there's always a. The, the problem they're running into is usually that they have to contact at least fourteen different families. To try to find an opening for this specific age of children, so that becomes a concern. There, they continue to keep looking, um, but it gets hard. And, uh, that's part of the things, there's some new pieces of legislation that are being presented. On the health and human soc, health and human services side. And some of them are dealing with the safety of kids, some of them are dealing, and Jonelle is. Under Bach and is on our, our, our. Our advisory committee, and she talked about some pieces of legislation. That parents should have the full right to make decisions of what happens to their children, including corporal punishment. There are some, um, also some pieces of legislation that are being addressed at the state level. Of transgender children and using some, uh, very intensive therapy programs to. To try to persuade children not to look at being bisexual or a, a different sex. And, um, that therapy can oftentimes be deadly, it's very fierce. So, um, there are pieces of legislation that individuals may want to get involved in. Um, one of the questions I asked was, okay, so if a parent ends up killing a child because of therapy. Are they still at fault for creating, causing a death? I don't know. I mean, when we've got these laws that being, are being proposed. One may be giving somebody more control or power, but there's another law that says we're not supposed to murder someone legally in the state. And think about it, I mean, you as an attorney, you know, which one takes precedent? So it's a.
I think that calls it near.
It's a tough situation, but anyway, um, I did also announce at the meeting, the team. Grand Forks's meeting on February, uh, January twenty-first, um, Saturday, and that's from ten to eleven thirty. And that session is held with local legislators and different, uh, people who want to come. And hear the legislature, legislators, or bring up any pieces of legislation you're interested in. They are all invited, and you're all invited at ten to eleven thirty, there's three of them. The first one is January twenty-first, the second one is February eighteenth, they're all Saturdays. And the third one is March eleventh, so they're all three Saturdays and you're all more than welcome to attend. Um, I believe David and I are representing the county, and I believe Mr. Ford usually comes for the legislative meetings. But anybody else, please come, if you want to talk to your legislators, you want to bring up certain pieces of legislation. Ten to eleven thirty, and it's at the Chamber of Commerce Building on North Third Street. So you're all more than welcome to attend. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hagan. I was, I was asleep for half of the time, so I didn't do much the last couple of weeks, did have a couple of Zoom meetings with. Space consultants, you know, on a variety of topics, because that's a lot of. Okay, thank you. Uh, as far as, uh, I'm concerned, it was, uh, I had the emergency management meeting. They, they're going to have those meetings quarterly, that was my first meeting, attending that. Uh, they went over some legislative items that pertain to emergency management. And, uh, it was actually a very short kick, only lasted about twenty-five minutes. The other thing that I want to bring up is the, uh, I passed out some material at the last county commission meeting. It's in reference to, uh, having a county administrator. And there was a support letter that was sent in with it. And the reason, you know, when you look at a county administrator, Cass County has one. Early County is in the process of, of getting a county administrator. Williston. Do you remember what county Williston's in, but they have a county administrator, and, uh, the odd thing.
It's Williams County.
Williams, yeah, Williams is Williston.
But I didn't know they had.
Williams?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, yeah, they do. But anyway, uh. Early County, the employees, the department has asked for it. For the commission to get a, a county administrator. When you look at that cover letter that I gave everybody, there's some things that a county administrator can do. Start the budget process early. Kind of coordinate, be the catalyst that holds everything together now. Having a county administrator here does not take the availability of department heads to come to their county commissioner and talk. You know, that I want to make perfectly clear, that they still could come and talk to their commissioner, and, uh. So, uh, you all had a chance to look at it, look at the letters and, and, uh, the. The difference between the two positions from what Mr. Ford was to what he could be. This would require him going from a grade twenty to a grade twenty-four-one. And, uh, so I'm looking for comments. From any of the commissioners.
Sorry. No, we do, so I did a little bit of thinking, I was kind of researching a little bit more about the counties and. The different roles that the county administrator had versus what Tom's role is now. I guess, I know that you would say that other counties do have the administrator role, but. I'm just comparing like Grand Forks County versus Cass County, Cass County's three times the size. So does it make sense to have that rule in a size county as we do? Again, being budget friendly and is it needed? Those are still some of the questions that I have, if it's, if it's necessary, I mean, I, I dug a little bit deeper too, I, I. Visited with some of the leadership here in the county. Some of them were just, is it necessary, I don't know if we need it, and those are the two biggest things that were, that were set, so.
So the letter of explanation that accompanied these things is pretty specific as to what he can do and how we can do it. A lot of those things he doesn't do now, and.
I, I didn't see that letter, and you talked about starting the budget process early, and that's part of my job, so when do you want it done?
What I would like to know is, is there money at cash carry, or we're talking about seven thousand dollars from?
To pay him seven thousand dollars more?
For the year.
Why are we doing this?
Well.
And this is quite shocking that we would have this discussion, and it's not, it's not on the agenda.
No, it is not, but it's under portfolio, so. It's some, I don't know, it, it, it's, this is the second time I believe it's come up.
I never got this paperwork and. Had it out last meeting?
Yeah, I, I passed it out to all the commission, to look at, to, so that we could discuss it, so. And I know, I know people know about it, you know, uh, heard about it. It's not, nothing that I don't think you didn't know, or Michelle. Uh, it's not, nothing that I don't think you didn't know, or Michelle over there. So, I mean. It is what it is, but.
She must have known because you have a grade now for this position.
Well, she had set that a long time ago. She had set that a long time ago.
Like in twenty?
When was it, when, when did you drop that?
We talked about that a couple, actually, I think a couple of years ago.
So it's twenty eighteen on the top.
Yeah, I haven't had any conversations since then.
I mean, it's a big deal to, to, you know, to have that role. You know, when I hear other counties, that person has a lot of responsibility and the pay that goes along with it. I guess I don't. I don't know if it's necessary right now, again, I'm still new here, so I am still learning what this role does and what. What we, our responsibilities are versus that. I mean, if we do have that job opening, I guess for me and other roles that I've had. If you're gonna open a job position, are we supposed to just open the job position and allow other people to apply? Like, is there a time period that should be open? Because I've had people come to me and say they don't think it's fair that we're opening a job and then. Just, a person just gets the job, like if it's a new role in our county. Because we're home rule now, that we have the opportunity to do that. I mean, is that?
Pretty much it's taking an existing position and promoting that person to, to, to take on more responsibility. So, it's.
Mr. wants it, you can answer that question perhaps, but not in this room, maybe, I don't know.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, Commissioner Hagan. Um, I likewise wasn't aware this was coming up today and I certainly could do some more research. Into the matter, I, I don't believe it's necessary that it be posted if it's reclassifying a position, but. Um, I, I could uh do some additional research to have a more concrete answer for the board.
Mr. Peach.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I would like to suggest that um, this. Uh, particular discussion go to Administrative Services Committee. Um, to give other employees an opportunity to learn more about it. Um, what the reclassification process has, holds. And um, I believe that Ms. Steele and Revertis should have an opportunity to take a look at the one from twenty-eighteen. We are into twenty-twenty-three, so that would make sense. Um, and then take it to Administrative Services. So that uh, other managers um throughout the county. Would have an opportunity to see what was shared with us. To update that position, to make sure that it would um cover. When it comes to an administrator position, there are administrators in all sizes of counties. Sometimes they do have um, other responsibilities that the commission gives that position. Um, so it's not always based on the size of the commission or the size of the county. But it is, um, it is giving a position at the county more responsibility. So I guess I would just like to lengthen the process out a little bit. Make sure that HR has a chance to uh, look at that position description from twenty-eighteen. Because it is a number of years. And then giving the other program managers throughout the county an opportunity to look at it. Um, so that they can have a better understanding as we move forward. Um, and then talk about it at Administrative Services. And then bring it back to the commission once Administrative Services has reviewed it.
And I don't know if it's, is this, if we are able to do it, but I mean, like we're doing with public health. Or if it needs to be a motion to like put together a hiring committee or a group of people to. Be the liaison between the, like you said, the employees and us, I know at our church, we're doing that right now for our church council. Is it needed? What are the responsibilities here, the candidates I think would be applicable? But I.
Great, it's obviously nothing personal. Once it been Tom, fantastic, congratulations, but I, to me, I also kind of. Share her concern that we would just slide someone to do a role that magnitude. I mean, it's, it's a pretty significant role, essentially they would become the top feeling of the county, which this county has existed without. And so, I mean. I guess, I would move that we, if we agree to fill this position at all, that we. Open it up and have a committee that we would appoint to look at Tom and any other applicant. Bring their recommendation back to us, and we reserve the right not to fill it at all. Or fill it.
Well, I think Administrative Services can handle it, I don't know what we need. Yeah, uh, we'll just, we'll just have an Administrative Services meeting or advertise it and people can speak on it.
And whatever information. Is going out to all the management.
Yeah, cuz I wasn't, sorry.
And I don't think we need a motion on it, no, I think we could just set it at Administrative Services.
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Rustic?
I mean, I'm still learning. Yeah, but. To me, I just, I've seen much lesser positions have a, a hiring committee established. So, that's what I'd be most comfortable with, I mean, if I can have a fit now, but.
Well, we can talk about a hiring committee at Administrative Services, but I, I don't think a, a hiring committee is necessary, so.
And we're all members of Administrative Services.
Right, yeah, it used to be three people, but now we're all.
Everybody always showed up, so it's, yeah, that's the committee now.
And I appreciate what you said, because that was the biggest sentiment when I visited with leadership in the, at the county offices. Is that they didn't know about it, concerns about it, not with what Tom's doing, but just like, they wanna have input. So, that's, give them a voice, and I wanna be able to, to stand up for that, so.
Mr. Mr. Jake and I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so. Every, if, candidly, and I work for the commission, I'll fill whatever really want me to fill. Uh, but candidly, when this discussion comes up, uh, it, it does put me in an uncomfortable position. Cuz I know there are some of my peers that just don't even want this position to exist and. There can be some misperceptions cast on me, but. As far, when I hear uh, hiring committees and postings, I get a little nervous. Uh, I, I've been with the county ten years, I've been the director of administration. I wanna say five, six years, somewhere in there. Besides uh Commissioners Hagan and, and Rustic, as you've just been recently reelected. Commissions that I've worked for, they have, there's my job description and then there's what else is added to it. Um, the commission as a, as an entity, as a board, has, has my job description, but then. You, the board itself has put the responsibility and the expectation of a county administrator on me. Many, many times, I, I fill that role. The, the concern I have is uh. I, Tom Ford's been good enough to serve in that capacity for a long time. But when the commission decides to make an official null sometime, or if not good enough. So that is a real concern, the other concern I have is. Obviously, the commission will do what it will, but if, if it opens it up, um, and of course, I would apply. Um, i- if someone else was appointed, you don't need me, which means you, you have to let that position go. Which tells me, again, if you have a director of administration, you, you, you go to an administrator and you don't need both. What's the director of administration, what roles he already, or she is fulfilling? That right there can answer that, you don't need both, so you, so you get someone comes in and. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but, you know, now I'm, I'm potentially talking about my livelihood here. Um, you could have some flashy, flash in the pants person come in, sell the commission. Makes basically the, the roles that the director of administration and the county administrator would fill, would start crossing over. And again, what is, what does that say when you don't need both, so. Uh, I'll fill whatever role the commission wants, but uh, I didn't speak up last time this topic came up for, for reason, but. You know? Uh, I feel uh. You're quite, quite alarmed when, when I hear, well, we can, we'll just do, uh, we'll just open it up and let anyone come into it live. Anything can happen, but I have been filling that role for some time now and, and, and I'll just reiterate. The commission has put that, whether it's in the job description or not, that if the commission has put that responsibility and expectation on this. This role, so I just would like to put that on the record.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Tom, Tom's right, I. The Administrative Services Committee though will meet and, and note this, no decision at this point to. Put the job out for bids or anything else. When this first came up, I was in favor of having the uh, county administrator. And we realized we couldn't do it because we weren't home rule. But he's doing that job and has been. You'll, you'll see when you're on the commission while. Well, Mr. Ford, we take care of that, and it's happened fifty to a hundred times. And, you know, I, I think it's probably something I would like to see, but let's get together in, in committee and talk about it. And uh, not do anything rash.
And sorry, as you say that, in the, we're giving each option, Mr. Ford. Is it, you know, you said like have Tom do certain things, is that some things that we could be doing to lessen the plate that he has?
Maybe, cuz most of us have other jobs.
No.
You know, we've gotta have some.
That's why, that's why counties have administrators.
Yeah, I mean. All of us have jobs. I have a lot for you guys, everybody.
You've all got your portfolios, I mean, you're up to here with what you gotta do, I know I am. And uh, so.
We're really gonna reclassify, so then his job, like the county administrator, right? Would that title or that role go away, or would we look to fill that role too? Cuz that's also.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, one person, we couldn't call it county administrator, you know, that's what he was doing. Because we realized that by law, we couldn't have a county executive unless we were home rule. And, you know, the, the county executive is not someone who's just gonna, it better, would never be someone who would act without commission approval.
Right.
But this, this is on. Well, we'll talk about it at committee, but the, the day-to-day things that go on, there are some decisions that some people. Just have to make, and, and we can't get together all the time, two of us are not even in town. By Zoom, of course, anytime, but let, let's get together and hash it out.
Yeah. And I. Mr. Ford has done. A job that is way above what he's, his job description says.
Right.
Basically, everything that's on that letter that I gave you, he's doing now. But uh. I would never, ever be in favor of opening up that job.
No, Ford.
Well, I would just bring this to the table, so I mean, there's some previous roles that I've had.
Yeah.
Open up a job, and I'm not saying that Mr. Ford can't do it, he's not capable, and he wouldn't be the rock star in that position. It's just that's, I don't know, you know, speaking of having other employees, and like, I'm just giving jobs to people. And creating it, that's why I just wanted to have that discussion.
It would be a promotion for, for him. That's what it would be. And he would take on more, more duties that he's already doing, exceeding. When his job description is now, so. So we'll set an administrative services meeting and we'll hash it out. What looks good for everybody?
Is there a Thursday?
Uh, next Tuesday or Thursday?
Thursday would be better for me.
Can you see it's good for you?
Sorry, Thursday would be better.
Thursday?
Up next week.
Yeah. What time? Commissioner Rustic?
I can make that work.
That'll work.
Anytime for me.
Either the beginning of the day or the end.
I would say the end of the day, I have more availability at the end of the day, anytime after three o'clock early.
Choose me at a normal time, four o'clock or something like that.
You wanna do it, what, at three, three-thirty, four o'clock?
It's three-thirty, three-thirty on the twenty-third.
Okay.
That's the chamber dinner night. We are in C, potentially, oh, on the twenty-sixth, yes.
Twenty-sixth, sorry, so the twenty-third.
Next Thursday, the chamber dinner?
Yes.
Oh, is that the same, chamber dinner day? Well, this, we've been done by five o'clock, what, what time is the chambers thing?
Well, there's potentially a pre-reception.
Right, yes, there is a pre-reception that day too.
Okay. Back to drawing board, what? How about nine o'clock in the morning?
That's bad for Commissioner Hagan.
Oh, yeah, okay. Usually afternoon? Twenty-fourth? After Zoom. I don't have to zoom it. I probably do it, but I don't have to zoom it. Oh, you don't have to zoom? Yeah, I'm entertaining my boss from Kansas. I have one time I can do on some.
Yeah.
It was Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, they could, closer to four o'clock.
Good with everybody, Tuesday?
What about the four o'clock for you?
I'll still be, again, in meetings, but I, I can try and sneak away and zoom in.
I mean, if we're trying to sneak it into next week, if that's bad for everybody, can we move like the first week of February, that Thursday, the second?
I won't be here.
Sorry. On the thirtieth or the thirty-first?
Yeah.
Will you be glad, did you say?
No, I'll be the first of February. But the thirtieth or thirty-first would be fine, the twenty-third.
I can't do it at the end of the day, what, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Could do it tomorrow.
No, I can't do it.
I gotta say, tomorrow I have a library board meeting.
This is almost comical, should we give this over email?
Debbie, aren't you glad that we're trying to do it now, that was a good suggestion?
Thirty. January thirtieth.
Thirtieth is a Monday.
Yeah, I can do.
Thirty for you?
Thirtieth on Monday?
Yeah, I can do that.
Anytime.
If I can, I can do it in the afternoon, the afternoon is best for me.
Three-thirty, thirty on Monday to thirty?
Three-thirty, Monday to thirty.
Look, we got something accomplished, we're so proud of us.
Good Lord, day three.
Three-thirty.
Okay.
Alright. Okay. So moving right along, let's get on to the unfinished business.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, we have five agreements for the board's review and approval pertaining to the ARPA funds. I would note that all of these items have previously been approved by the board. So um, for your consideration today is just the agreements uh for the chair's signature. So the first item on the agenda is the CBIC agreement. I would note that this is the second allegation or allocation that that word has. Has approved for CBIC. The prior allocation has already been approved and the contract has been entered into. So this is for um, three hundred thousand dollars. Um, that was approved by the board on August sixteenth of twenty-twenty-two. I would note for your consideration, as, as you're well aware. Um, there are specific uh requirements that need to be followed for the expenditure of ARPA funds. And certain expenditure categories. Uh, this uh agreement with CBIC outlines that the category that these funds are allocated to is two-point-three-four. Which is aid to nonprofit organizations. Um, this agreement outlines uh the requirements under that category. So I would ask for the board's approval of the CBIC agreement.
Any questions? We have a motion to approve?
So.
So moved by Commissioner Peach, second, Mr. Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion's carried.
The next agreement is with the Northlands Rescue Mission. This is for the allocation of fifty thousand dollars to go to that organization. Also under the same category, aid to nonprofit organizations, expenditure category. Also under the same category, aid to nonprofit organizations, expenditure category two-point-three-four. I would likewise ask for the board's approval of that agreement.
We have a motion to approve Northland Rescue Mission. Commissioner Ruston, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motions carried.
The next agreement is with the East Central Regional Water District. Um, they requested funds in the amount of forty thousand dollars. The category that these funds are allocated to is aid with water and sewer infrastructure category five-point-one-one. Projects under this category qualify if they are necessary water and sewer infrastructure projects that align with eligible uses under the EPA's drinking water and clean water state revolving funds. If you recall from their presentation, they had indicated to the board at that time that this project would qualify under that program. So I would likewise ask for the, uh, board's approval of this agreement and the chair's signature.
How much was that one?
Forty thousand.
Forty, okay. I have a motion. Now, Commissioner Hagan, second. Commissioner Ruston, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motions carried.
Thank you. Um, the next or the last two agreements, um, are addendums to agreements we have already executed with two separate entities, Northwood Deaconess Health Center and the Grant Forks, uh, Foundation for Education. The reason we needed to execute addendums is that some further guidance was issued by the Department of Treasury. Providing some more detail on what would qualify as a sub-recipient versus a beneficiary. The previous agreement designated them as a separate sub-recipient, which would require us to do, um, some additional auditing. After review, these entities would qualify as a beneficiary. So the first agreement is with Northwood Deaconess. Addendum is switching them from a sub-recipient to a beneficiary. Also changing the category that the expenditure is for to category five-point-one-one, replacing lost public sector revenue for provision of government services. As you see in the agreement, there are some additional conditions that have been added to this agreement based on further guidance we've received since the initial agreement was executed. So I would ask for the chair's signature and the board's approval of the addendum for the Northwood Deaconess Health Center.
We have a motion. Commissioner Hagan, second.
Anybody?
And now this, I'm going to, Northwood Deaconess, my, my, my board, so I'm not, do you have a second for anybody down here?
Oh, you gotta go off like the outside.
Yeah, Commissioner Ruston, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motions carried.
Thank you. The last addendum is pertaining to the Grant Forks Foundation for Education, for the Career Impact Academy. The only change is to, um, switch them from a sub-recipient to a beneficiary and add the additional contract language. Um, it does not change the expenditure category for this entity. So I would ask for the board's approval and the chair's signature.
Peach, second.
Second.
Commissioner Hagan, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Carried.
Mr. Chairman, we did receive the letter that Northwood Deaconess is, um, they have some proposed traffic signal improvements and it is listed there. I'll get one thirty-three and, uh, one thirty-four tells you you need to respond by January thirty-third.
You, is that it?
That's it.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Ruston. You can buy Mr. Hagan, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.